This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we'll kick this thing off. This is a joint meeting of the Plan and Development Subcommittee, Town Council Meeting Thursday, February 3rd, 2022, and it is 6:03 right now. Agenda pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30 Alpha, Subsection 18, and as extended into law on June 16th, 2021, and that extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. It's meeting of the Plan and Development Subcommittee is being conducted via remote participation only. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for the October, I'm sorry, or in the order. Persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by remote information noted below. We will post a record of this meeting on town's website at www.ci.southernus.us as soon as we are able. We'll call. Agenda number one is what we'll call, Councilor Adams is present. Catherine? Your mic's off, Catherine.
Yes, sorry.
Okay. DeeDee is going to be late.
I'm here.
She is not here right now. Counselor Lozlo? Counselor Dow? Okay. I'm going to ask Counselor Marquetti to step in until DeeDee shows up or one of the other subcommittee member shows up. Agenda number two, consider and accept Plan and Development meeting minutes of January 2022. I have not done them yet, so I will put them on the February 10th meeting for the Plan and Development when that gets out. My apologies on that one. Agenda number three, after further discussion, we are putting this, we're going to postpone this or put this on February 10th meeting because I would say be prepared for February 10th vice February 3rd at this point in time. It would be who will be planning to have it on that date. So apologize for agenda number three. Agenda number four, provide an update on the Economic Development Administration's ARPA Travel Tourism and Outdoor Recreation Grant application to design and construct a rail trail. Either Town Manager or Ms. Dean, if you want to speak.
Michael, you're on mute. Would you like me to speak?
I was going to say, thank you, Ms. Dean, that the two of us can speak. Why don't you start explaining then what transpired after the last council meeting? And when it comes to talking about, you know, who we've been talking to and where some of that stands, I'll chime in as well with what you and I have respectively been doing this week and last week.
Okay, so the Town Council voted on the 24th to go ahead with the rail trail to approve up to $5.6 million for the application. We knew we had scheduled on the 25th a meeting with the Northeast EDA rep who covers all of, you know, Pennsylvania North. They've already seen 145 applications come in the door, and she warned us that our ask was too big, that our application was likely not competitive enough, and that we should try to fund a match and try to, and we had to have the letter from MassDOT committing to entering into the lease agreement. And so I've been working hard with MassDOT to try to get that letter. They've also given us the okay to go ahead and wait to submit all materials until we have them next Tuesday, the 8th. And so we wanted to come to you at this point for an update on, one, we are working with BSC Group to reduce the scope down from the 5.6 million to somewhere closer to what she suggested we come in at, which is 1.5 to 3. So we've come down to 3.5 so far, and that is doing everything we can to kind of eliminate unnecessary to be able to still go forward with end-to-end construction. And so that means, for instance, the trail that goes on the Army Corps of Engineer land at Westville, you know, we're not going to be helping them to upgrade that. When it comes to the trails that are on our West Street School, we're not going to upgrade that trail. We're just going to come right to the school to be able to connect and make sure that we can get into that trail, and it's, you know, the quote-unquote "end-to-end." And then with the match, we are trying to meet the match by, one, looking at any contiguous work being done and work being done at on the rail trail. So for instance, the West Street project, which we're already funding with CDBG Water and Sewer, is going to be credited as quote-unquote "share" or as a match. The intersections that are involved in the TIP project that run through Hook to Foster that will touch the rail trail will be credited as match. Heather and the DPW will be doing clearing and grubbing up to, I think, over $100,000 worth in value as a quote-unquote "match." And so we're doing everything to kind of bolster the picture so that our 3.5 million can come down to, you know, so that our project can come down to the 3.5 million. And so we felt like at this time again, we wanted to update you. In the meantime, Michael has been working hard also to address the match.
So just to back up a little bit, so you're aware, at least to me, and I think I can speak for Ms. Dean as well as BSC, what the Northeast EDA rep came as a bit of a shock because we immediately got on a call afterwards. No one saw this coming, that they were going to ask us for a local contribution. And when we're talking a local contribution, they were stating a minimum 20%, if not 30% of the total project value, which would be between 1.1 million and 1.7 million dollars. And we had, and Ms. Dean is not giving it the appropriate amount of praises due, but she was meeting, you know, two, three times a day with people last week, I would say, and we've been talking, we've been, she's been securing letters from a lot of folks. I've written to Senator Warren, she's written to Senator Markey, Representative Neal, our local legislators, MassDOT. And then when we met at the opening of the Massachusetts Municipal Police Training Center, we had a great conversation with the Lieutenant Governor and her staff, and we maintained some level of communications with them. At that point, the Lieutenant Governor thought it may be a way for the town to get some of the state's ARPA money or maybe even some of the infrastructure money that's coming down the pike. So we've been really pushing to get that follow-up meeting with the Lieutenant Governor. We've had correspondence with her scheduler and her personal assistant. They're trying to get us a meeting so that we could have a face-to-face with the Lieutenant Governor and make our case to get some of that money. I think we're trying to get a couple of options for the council. One is do an end-to-end scale down and still try and get the 100% from EDA, or if we're lucky enough to get some of this additional monies from the state, use that as our contribution and submit it, maybe with the plan as originally proposed. Or the third option, which may be on the table, is under the new ARPA rules, under the new calculation of lost local revenue, they're using a standard deduction allocation. And I've been attending some of the webinars that have been produced by the U.S. Treasury as well as the State's Administration of Finance and Department of Revenue Office, that we may be able to use some of the money that was strictly for water and sewer infrastructure and other areas for some other infrastructure-related projects. So there is a possibility, if the council is inclined, that we may be able to use some of our remaining ARPA funds rather than on a water or sewer project, we might be able to use it for the rail trail. And that's how I'm interpreting what we're hearing. You know, I'm still watching to see what our other peers in the area are doing. I think a lot of people will probably stick to the traditional buckets of water, sewer, infrastructure, broadband, dealing with the economic impacts as well as responding to the pandemic. But under the lost revenue category, you can almost use those as a wild card for anything that the town sees fit, provided it's not prohibited by these final rules. So as I interpret it, we could be able to use some of that money for the rail trail. So if the council doesn't want to go with paring it down and we don't get any money from the state, our third recourse may be to use some ARPA funds. So that's why we're briefing you. This has all happened in about a week's time. And as Ms. Dean said, and I want you to know, she's been scrambling, talking to as many people as possible to try and keep the plan that we proposed just over a week ago intact, if not still try and get 100% of the funding, but it would have to be a scaled-down project. So, you know, we're trying to respond as quickly as these rules and guidance are changing. We're trying to come up with a viable plan because we still think the rail trail is of great importance to this community, not just to the people, but also to the future of economic growth and making South Bridge a destination. So, you know, we're still pressing to get the face-to-face with the Lieutenant Governor to see if they'll give us, you know, if not all, but at least some of that contribution. Maybe that'll help advance our application, but we're working very diligently. We didn't expect the curveball that was thrown last week, but we wanted to let you know, but also let you know that we may have to modify either what we're asking for or come up with a local contribution in order to see this project through. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I mean, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. And Peg, I don't know if you want to tell him who you have letters from already, any commitments?
Sure. So, yeah, as Michael said, we have been reaching out to as many people as possible. So we have a letter from Markey, from Neal. At the state level, we have from Fatman and Durant co-signed. From the state, we have a letter from Lieutenant Governor supporting the project. And their chief of staff has reached out to MassDOT to try to get the, them to compel MassDOT to sign the letter of intent, which is crucial for us to be able to go forward. So I just had a call from Chalita Bellfield at 5:30 saying she heard from the chief of staff, and she was intending already on getting us that letter. And so I'm not sure if it helped at all, but, you know, things are coming together. Also, BSC Group will be on the meeting on Monday to make sure, or at the meeting on Monday, to make sure that they can provide you sort of more detail about how they're trying to reduce the scope without compromising the DEP best management practices, with making sure that we are getting the end-to-end so that we can all be assured that, because I'd said, no matter how this plays out, I need assurance that, you know, we can see this through to construction. So there's no sense in us going for a grant that we're then going to feel like is, you know, not going to be able to complete the end-to-end. And then with regards to the other local support, we're reaching out to the McCarthys to be able to provide a letter showing how our investment will bolster the 12 Crane Street vision and what kind of investment they'll see as, you know, a cultural and restaurant opportunity down on the rail trail. So, you know, I feel like things are lining up well. My suggestion with regards to the funding might be, if the governor's office isn't going to fund us, would that be, you know, at the point where we want to ask the town to consider, even if not the full project, more of the scaled-down project with the local match? And then the eligibility beyond the infrastructure category or the lost revenue, we have two qualified census tracts that, according to ARPA, are where you can, you can do projects that you see as helping sustain future viability for the community, economic development for the community. And those qualified census tracts go from, literally, the Moore Street Bridge would like, and at the qualified census track. And then it would go on up through over to Crane. So it's a, or almost to Crane. So it's a good portion. And so if we are to put the value of that together, it's well over, I was trying to do the math just this morning, it was probably over $800,000 worth of census tract. So you could easily say whatever portion, you know, is a local share, you could target it at that qualified census tract to be able to cover yourselves if you were interested. So I feel like we just wanted to make sure that if, for some reason, the Town Council wanted to have the opportunity to bolster the application, to advocate for a local share, that obviously would need to start here at the subcommittee, and it would need to start with an agenda item. But we are doing everything we can, like Michael said, to be able to do this 100% outside of the town funds. And again, like he said, that this was a total surprise to us. We are allowed to apply for the full funding, but we are trying to take the guidance of this EDA rep.
Are any questions, I guess? I can't, I couldn't tell if I lost sound or... Mr. Chairman, I think...
Yeah, I think it... Did everybody hear what Peg said at the end about $800,000? Dollars and all that? I think that's where it started to slow down. Catherine?
Yeah, I just had a question. So if we don't get the funding, is there room for, like, any fundraisers or maybe for local businesses to sponsor or at least, almost like a adopt-the-highway type thing? You know what I mean? Like, if we did like a fundraiser where local businesses can say they donated money for like a certain section and then have their businesses have like a little post or something? Is that something possible or just to generate money so this can go forward? And I would love to see that bridge go back up. So I'm all for fundraising for that.
Thank you, Catherine. Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
Yes, so unfortunately, I think it's a wonderful idea, Catherine, and maybe that's a way to be able to increase the scope if we were to reduce it a little bit. But to be able to apply for the minimum of whatever we're applying for with a match, we need a letter of commitment with the funds actually appropriated. So it's incredibly technical, it's a federal grant, it's highly competitive, and the language is, you know, sort of why we hired these experts to comb through it. For instance, I'll just give you a little bit of a deep dive into one example. For the TIP, the TIP project is scheduled for 2024. It is not actually appropriated funds. It is slated to be appropriated, and it's a priority that's been signed off on by MassDOT as reasonably expected to be funded, but it falls under a certain category of funding that has to do with capturing emissions. It's a bucket of funds that only gets appropriated every year based on population, and so technically it's not appropriated until the year of the project. We're not sure if because of those kinds of details, that will be considered a match for us. And that's, you know, again, that's the level of technical scrutiny that we're getting on this match. So, you know, if we are going to get from the governor's office, for instance, we need a letter in writing that states that, you know, where these funds are coming from and how much, you know, et cetera. It's not enough to have a letter of support saying, yes, we, you know, we reasonably expect to give you funds, or it might not be enough for us to be able to say, it's town, we expect to be able to fundraise for, you know, X amount. So it's really tight. And I think Counselor Adams had said to me, you know, do we have time to prepare more to be able to bring this forward as a more complete package? But no, unfortunately, because this is ARPA funding, it's this one-time funding opportunity, this notice of funding came out and said that the application was due in March with the preferred timeline to be January 31st. And so they are, that Northeast rep is saying she wanted it in on the 31st. If we have to wait eight days, she still feels like that could be, you know, waiting. It's worth it to get a full package, but to her, that's a long time outside of the preferred January 31st. So I feel like, you know, we're fighting with big dogs here, and if we want to make this happen for ourselves, we've got to make sure it's as concrete according to the grant as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Anything else, Catherine? Catherine, anything else?
All right, no.
So one point, if I could, you know, and Ms. Dean mentioned the issue about the qualified census tract. We were operating under that, under the interim rule, and that was something we used to utilize some funds before. There's a header now on top of the frequently asked questions, which talked about that, saying that, that because of the new rule, we're going to have to wait for the new frequently asked questions and interpretations. There's an interim rule and a final rule on how to use ARPA funds. And so they're advising you that we're going to have to look to see what the interpretation will be under the final rule. This is how complex this is, and these documents are hundreds of pages long. So that's why I stuck with the, under this new local allocation method. So, but, you know, if we make the commitment, I think, before April 1st, it still applies to the interim final rule. I don't want to bore you people with technical details, but it's that complicated that, it's like filling out a 1040 with all your schedules and everything and the rules that you have to adhere to for complicated tax return. So I guess that's the closest analogy I can come to with this.
Thank you, Town Manager. I know Counselor Marquetti has his hand up, but I wanted to ask if Heather Blakely had anything to say because I know she's going to have to go here in a few minutes.
I just, hopefully everybody can hear me. I just wanted to say that, you know, Peg has been working really hard, and we've been brainstorming on how to reduce the scope or how we can do our own matches. And that was why the, you know, volunteering the DPW to do the clearing and grubbing, since we do have some of that machinery and we definitely have the labor force, that that could be a qualified match. So, you know, I want you to know that we are trying to work together. I know West Street, the engineer, has just provided some opinion of costs that we have to go through basically to break down tomorrow morning to try to get what that match will be out of there. So you, I think it was 180, they estimated, for the clearing and grubbing, and I think it's going to be close to 250,000 just for the West Street section. Those, you know, continuing on and doing those projects and showing that we're doing those projects and even just detailing that we're planning for the TIP, I think actually puts us in a really good light going forward. So I think, you know, we have to package all of those things that we're doing together in our application in a very positive light. You know, we're going to donate labor through our forces. We're going to, you know, we're already doing a project that we already have committed funds to, and that with that committed fund project, we're already going to develop this, whether you do this or not. All of those things, even probably mentioning that we want to do complete streets, that you voted in that complete streets and that you're going forward for that, these are all things that are going to put us in the best light going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Blakely. Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I would just like to say that I consider this a classic, a classic bait and switch. Now, the council was sold on this for 5.6 million. I was opposed to it, but the council went along with it. 5.6 million, and now we're down to 3.6 million. And from what Peg is saying tonight, it could even go even lower than 3.6 million. And I wouldn't doubt if it does go down even further than that. The issue, I think, when you look at this, and this is my opinion, is not a matter of whether we can get this funding, this grant, it's a matter of whether we want to take this grant. And I would definitely tell the state, if you want us to take this trail, you will come up with 5.6 million, and that's what I would do with it. That's why I would stand my ground on it. They want to unload this corridor, give us 5.6 million, or just forget it. I don't see why we should even get involved with this. We're not going to get the funds that someone told you we were going to get 5.6 million. I don't think you just came up with that, you know, out of your hat or anything. I think that someone said 5.6 million. As far as infrastructure money and ARPA money goes, you talk to residents in this town, and they'll tell you what they want that spent on. They want sidewalks and streets taken care of. They want curbside garbage collection taken care of. I think that if you ask them about the rail trail, it's a nice to have, there's some positives to it, but there's also some negatives to it. And there is a lot of streets in this town that don't even have sidewalks, and you want to spend every dollar that we can get on a rail trail. So as far as I'm concerned, I would just forget this. If they're not going to give us 5.6 million, tell them, forget it, we're not going to take it. And that's my opinion on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
So the, I believe that in Peg correctly, just, I'm not disagreeing with Counselor Marquetti at all. The number was the number that I think our consultants came up with. The ARPA funds are coming from the feds, and they were the ones who led us to believe that we could get the 100% match. And they're the ones who've come back and said, well, yes, you're right. There is, it seems to be a bit of a bait and switch in that in order to, you know, enhance our chances of getting the funds for such a big ask, we have to put in additional funds. We're going to the state to see if they'll share some of their money that they got from the feds to help offset and make that contribution. And I get 100% what you're saying because I already had a conversation with Ms. Dean saying that my sense was the council may want to keep the, our local share of ARPA funds strictly for the infrastructure that we're doing with the streets and the water and sewer. So, you know, we realized that that's a discussion that has to happen amongst you folks. We're just pointing out the realities of what we learned following our meeting with the federal representative on January 25th. So it left us scrambling. And I know the discussions we've had since I've come here about the rail trail are very important. I know Counselor Katrona has been a champion of this. So we're trying to make sure that we, we see this through the end. And if it's an all or nothing, we've talked about that as well, that it may be that we have to put in for the full amount, and if they don't give it, they don't give it, and we have to revisit it. If there's another round of funding, we don't know if there'll be another round of funding. But there's only so much money out there, and we have to apply for everything we can. And if they don't give it to us, then we have to rely on our local share. And if the citizens want to use it to, you know, take care of some of our immediate needs, then I understand that as well.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else?
We're just trying to present you with all the information as it's coming to us in that, you know, we may have to make those tough decisions. And I say "we," the town, the administration, along with the council as to what we do. And, you know, I think we understand that the direction and the intent of what the vast majority of people may be different, but we're trying to follow the wishes of the council, but there could be, you know, an intersection or conflict, I guess, of what we can do with some of these funds when it comes to the end of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Is there anybody else? Counselor Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to Peg and the Town Manager, can you tell me how many of these grants are available to local towns and communities? Is there just one or is it multiple?
This is the only one of its kind. Their EDA was given a lot of money from ARPA, and they split it into two parts. One goes straight to the state strictly for tourism-related activity, and the other went out to the nationwide competitive grant opportunity through this travel tourism and outdoor recreation, and two other grants. This, there's economic adjustment assistance, the EAA, and then there's another bucket of funds. But talking with our consultants, this was really the best fit for us, and we consider all of these grants sort of one-time opportunities. But say we're past, say this is not the opportunity for us. Say we get looked over by the EDA. We could then try to go for the RACE infrastructure funds. But I know the state and we have many infrastructure priorities that are probably far well above and beyond our rail trail needs, right? And so it's hard to figure out where this would be the best priority for the funding. I personally think this is, this is the right place for us to be applying as aggressively as possible. But yes, we could potentially repackage this and try to go for other funds as they come up.
One other point of information, it may shed some light for Counselor Katrona, too. Peg, correct me if I'm wrong, but the rep from the EDA said at this point they hadn't received an application from anybody in Massachusetts. So they were thinking that if we apply and had put in this contribution, we're still competing with other states. So it would look good that we're the only application from Massachusetts, but we'd still be competing with the other 49 states. So to get the... So to get the the attention was why they recommended we put in the contribution. So we'd be competitive with the much larger states. So the the only one thing that I took away from that is we wouldn't be competing with some of our neighbors in the area. So we might get a nod because we're the only Massachusetts application. But we still have to compete with these other bigger states and in municipalities that have more money that might be able to put a match. It it was that what you heard, Ms. Dean?
Yes, but she did emphasize, she did emphasize that that was the Monday before the submission date or the Tuesday before the submission date, the following Monday, which, you know, she said within the last two days, they had received all those applications. So there's a good chance that there could be a Massachusetts project coming in the door. But yes, she was, she, her job is to help us to be as competitive as possible and to keep, you know, and to help us meet the notice of funding requirements. And so as Michael said, you know, at that time, she she didn't know of another Massachusetts project. So it was hopeful if we can try to pull these elements together.
Thank you. To Mike, to the town manager, what do we have for our performance?
It don't have the exact dollar figure right in front of me, but it's roughly about 4.1 million. We started out with. I might be able to pull it up. We started out with just over $5 million. I had it. It's funny you ask because I had it all up on my screen for something else earlier today. But we've used just about a million dollars to date on the Main Street project and a couple of other small items. So we have just over $4 million left. You know, I doubt we can pull it right up. I'm sorry. I probably should have had that.
That is, thank you. I I I'm still in favor of going forward with this. Even if the town has to match, I I still firmly believe that that it's. With all the work being done downtown and all the infrastructure work being done. I I still think it's worthwhile for us to go forward. You know, we've we've talked about reviving the town for quite a long time. You know, is is. Is this one of the many ways of helping to do that? I firmly believe, yes, it is. But I'm only one person and, you know. Being hiking bike, many bike trails throughout Massachusetts and throughout New England. They attract a lot of people to to them. And I I just sincerely would support it going forward. Thank you.
Can I give you my God's honest opinion about what might be the best strategy, Diddy?
Thank you, Captain. Appreciate it. Ms. Dean, go ahead.
Okay, so excuse me, counselor for being a little more casual. So what I wonder is if we don't get a commitment from the governor's office. And we have a budget from VSC group, a scaled down budget from VSC group. Do we match, say, up to, you know, no more than $500,000 for if it means getting us down to 300, the 3 million, you know, which is what the EDA recommended. But we don't have those numbers yet to even be able to suggest a number. The SC group is getting us, Heather and I are going to hop on a call first thing tomorrow morning. They said that they'll have some suggestions for us tomorrow. And so, you know, we could potentially make us a recommendation tomorrow for Monday's town council meeting. Or the town manager could have a meeting with the lieutenant governor by Monday that knows definitively one way or the other, whether we may get the funding. So that would, my personal opinion is wait and see. Between now and Monday, whether we get a commitment from the lieutenant governor and what the VSC group recommends. And then we can provide an updated writing.
Thank you, Ms. Dean.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any? I see Dee Dee got on while we're here and then Council Dow as well. Any other comments at all? Though I guess the only thing I would say here is, you know, allowing this to go back up and have a good conversation to the town council, I think is warranted. I do believe that the rail trail is an infrastructure project. And it will benefit the town. And then I think the numbers have to be crunched down just a little bit as we, as as Miss Dean has. It's spoken. I'm sure there'll be a lot more information come Monday on that. And I think it's a good conversation to have. This is what we're going to look forward in the future for our rail trail. And I am glad that it's not going to be cut off or the recommendations aren't to be, you know, going from Sturbridge down to the center and then that's it, or or from Gold Creek down to Dudley. I'd rather see the whole project be done than, you know, bits and pieces because that way there's kind of a guarantee. And to be honest with you, I don't think that rail trail will ever finish if we just don't go for it, you know, so. And one big shot. Dee Dee, I don't know if you were all long enough. Did you have anything? No, Council Dow.
No, most of that, thank you.
Thank you. So the question here is, you obviously have a motion that you you guys would like to adhere to for Monday night, which is pretty general, Miss Dean.
So I, at the town manager's recommendation, if if I had said I wanted to leave the opportunity for the town council to be able to potentially consider a match, should the lieutenant governor not be able to fund it? And so in order to be able to consider that, can we keep the agenda item as is for Monday?
Okay, so we're looking at considering recommending, we consider recommending town council. Use ARPA funds towards a match. The Economic Development Administration or EDA, American Rescue Plan Administration or ARPA, travel tourism and outdoor recreation grant application to design and construct a rail trail which was approved on January 24th. That sound okay? As far as a recommendation?
Michael, do you think that that's appropriate?
It it sounds about right. You know, I think. Generally, you want to have something sufficient to give people notice on an agenda so that they realize you're going to take action relation there too. So the fact that you're saying you want the council to discuss this and possibly vote to use ARPA funds. Which they're now saying are essentially grant funds, so they have to be voted by the town council to use. It as long as that gives people sufficient notice to know that there would be a discussion, a potential vote to use those funds. I think that that's all you need to have.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Michael and Miss Dean. So what I'd need is a first and a second on that motion list. Somebody from the subcommittee wanted to change that. Before we go, go ahead.
Thank you.
I need a second.
No.
You you may want to fix, and I apologize, Mr. Chairman. Usually we haven't, and you know, authorized the manager to sign any documents in relation there too is. Just so that if.
So the motion's on the, okay, we got a first. Who had a second?
I'll second.
I do have Council Marquetti, who is, I asked to fill in. I don't know if Dee Dee or Council Dow feel comfortable voting on this since you guys weren't here at the very beginning of this. Do you guys feel comfortable?
I don't.
That's fine.
How's her dad does? You don't, okay. But I'm going to ask Council Marquetti to put his vote into since he was gracious enough to sit in for a few minutes. And I appreciate that again. All right, at this point in time, any discussion on the motion in hand? Very, very well. I'll go like Council Marquetti.
I believe Council Katrina had his hand up before I did.
I'm sorry, Council Katrina. I apologize.
I did. Thank you, Counselor. Through the chair, I was going to wait till Monday night, but I just want to be sure that to the town manager, the the funds were. If I've heard you correctly, 20 to 30% or 1.1, 1.7 million. Is that correct?
That was my quick math. So of the 5.6 million. The rep said that at a minimum, we should be contributing 20, but to further our applications chances, we should really be considering a 30% match. So the 5.6, I guess that's really 1.2 million to close to 1.7.
So do we, thank you, do we, through the chair or to the chair? In the motion, should there be a a dollar figure placed on on the motion?
I don't know. That's a good question, but I don't know if we need to have it tonight where we can possibly, the town council can amend it on Monday evening. As numbers get crunched.
Okay, thank you.
The better.
Actually, I think that's a pretty good question. Let me. Because I know from my town meeting moderator days, you would have to, on certain numbers, if you put a dollar amount, you can't amend it up. You can only amend it down. I'm trying to remember if there's no dollar amount. I'm just trying to think what the exact. Looking for a number.
Well, I know we've gone constantly back to the town council where we've added or subtracted. Go ahead, Council Marquetti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Is it even proper to have a motion tonight since it wasn't on the agenda? Uh, the agenda says for discussion only. I'm I'm just.
Yeah, no, no, that's a good point. But I do know the subcommittees at this point in time. We can make emotions on her because there's only recommendations up. Like we did the DPWs the other night. It was, I don't think there was actual motions. They're all just discussions, I think. Don't quote me on that one. Well, at this point in time, we got a first and a second on this, at this, and we have the discussion. So, you know, I don't think the numbers are are even close to what we need to be right now. Hopefully by Monday, there'll be a better idea and then we could possibly amend that motion. Once we put a number on there, maybe town manager may be right, may may not be able to go up or would you say go down?
Usually you can amend it down, but you can't add to. That's my recollection. But the 30% of 5.6 million is 1.68 million dollars. So if you, your top end is 1.7.
All right. So we want to amend this at this point in time and put that 1.7 in there?
Or not to exceed.
Not to exceed 1.7 million dollars? The problem. The problem we're having right now is time with the 48 hour notice. Oh, meanwhile. We've already built the agenda into the town council agenda. I mean, we can amend that agenda again. We have to. All right. So how about this amendment to that that item? The agenda item, excuse me. Let's see. Recommend town council. Use. ARPA funds towards a match. The Economic Development. Administrations or EDA, American Rescue Plan Administration or ARPA, travel tourism, outdoor recreation grant application to design and construct a rail trail through January 24, 2022, not to exceed 1.7 million dollars. And allow the town manager to sign off on all appropriate documentation. All right, give it a thumbs up or thumbs down. I mean, if we could have.
Should the word match?
This is a second.
I think Council Katrina had a question. I.
I'm sorry, I didn't raise my hand. I'm sorry. Should the word match be in your, in there, Counselor?
But it's local contribution, I think, is their word wording.
Thank you.
And you do put that it's from the ARPA funds, correct? That's.
Correct. Isn't that wording? It does say match and does say ARPA. Yeah, okay.
As long as.
Okay. Well, who?
What are we doing?
We could do a friendly amendment to that if you'd like. If you're okay with that.
So you you don't, you don't withdraw the first motion we make already?
Yeah, it's up to you. You made the motion. We amended it. You want to do a friendly amendments?
Whatever would work. I don't, I don't care. Whatever would.
So I'm assuming that's a yes. All right. And then Catherine, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion at that point? All right. All those in favor? Council Adams, yes. Give me four minutes. I'm not used to this here. Uh, Council Marquetti. Catherine.
Yes.
And Council Dow, you said you're good with voting on this tonight?
Yes.
The three to one positive recommendation. And Ms. Dee, Dee Dee, are you abstaining from the vote? Okay, so it'll be a three, one, one. Council Marquetti, did you want to stay on this as far as the committee or do you want to step away?
Up to you.
Okay, I'll just have you step away now that we have the form in hand. Thank you for your time, Council Marquetti. Appreciate it. Agenda item number five, recommend town council approve applying for the shared streets and spaces grant funding for snow removal equipment to clear pedestrian ways and to paint priority crosswalks with more durable paint to include pavement treatment if allowed and allow the town manager to sign required paperwork related to the application. Need a motion or a second, please?
What shall move?
I'll second.
Thank you. Excuse me for a minute. All right, Mr. Town Manager and Ms. Dean.
I can refer to Ms. Dean on this.
Sure. Thank you. Unfortunately, Heather popped off. I was hoping that she would be on this. The question, as always, is to what subcommittee do we bring these agenda items? This was a shared streets. We applied for shared streets last round through the PND Subcommittee. And I had asked for the DPW to work with me to come up with a proposal for their March 1st shared streets application deadline. Heather is interested in applying for winter snow removal equipment. There's two different categories we can apply for at the same time within this application. One is for speed management. And one is for equipment only. Speed management is for up to 200,000. Snow removal equipment can be up to $50,000. So she went out for quotes. And so it, we will go ahead and pursue, if approved, the the equipment. Plus, the speed management will be the the crosswalk painting. We're not sure at this time whether we're going to be allowed to do the pavement treatments. And so that's why we have the language in there that says if allowed to do the pavement treatments. At the least, we'll do the painting, which would be incredibly cheap. We'd probably get the the grant to be able to do all crosswalks in town with this durable paint. It's a, it's a pretty reasonable unit price. But then the pavement treatments are really what the, is the expensive part. And so it's either we'll end up getting all of our crosswalks painted or we'll get our priority crosswalks painted, plus we'll get pavement treatments. And I'm estimating on up to around 12 crosswalks. And at this time, we would hope you would support the application.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Questions? I get, then I, go ahead, Council Marquetti. No, you're lag.
Oh, thank you. I was just curious if, again, once again, shouldn't this go on DPW? Because it is. I know it's a grant that maybe PEG Dean applies for, but it's all, it's being used by DPW departments. So that's my only question. I think it's a great idea. Glad to see you going after this. Just wanted to know whether or not this should go on DPW. Thank you.
I think it's a valuable point. Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
Um, I have no rebuttal. I think I opened with the comments that Heather and I weren't sure which Subcommittee to go to. And I think also by default, we had a Subcommittee scheduled for PND. So I asked if I could include this in the PND Subcommittee to ensure that we get this application approved by town council, rather than waiting until the February 28th for it to be due on March 1st. If we can have it approved at the February 7th town council meeting, we have more time to get signatures, et cetera, and get the application in.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. I, I would say if, if, I, I guess we had communicated a little bit better with this. I know with shared streets, we went through PND last year as well, did not go through DPW. But it's a valid point as far as, because all this stuff is kind of DPW related at this point. And, but Council Marquette, did you have anything else? Okay, the only thing I'd ask is, is the, I understand the paint, because in California, that they have certain paint that's really, really reflective and very, very thick. And I don't see that a lot here in Massachusetts, where I think it should be probably more so than California, where it's, Southern California, where it's constantly dry. And you don't get that snow on the road like you do here. I recommend that too as well. Has there any been, been talk, and I don't know if this would even be part of it? You know, many states use what they call rumble strips and not, not the type that you throw into, into the ground, but you actually dig into the ground, into the asphalt itself, where it does slow down the traffic quite a bit or the wavy traffic. I think it's a wavy rumble strip. I guess it is. And would that be something that we could possibly apply for next year? It's, it's speed management and I've talked to Chief Woodson before. And I think the Traffic Commission about doing it on 169 as it's coming from the state highway into the town, where there's constant speeding, the United Lens is over there to, to regular streets, where we see like on Charlton, constant speeding. I'm sure Morris has constant speeding. So is that something that we could apply for or look into next year?
We can look at the, the grant details. I can get back to you.
All right, that's, that's all I had. Okay, thanks. Appreciate it. Anybody else on this? Any discussion? All those in favor? Council Adams, yes. Catherine?
Yes.
Dee Dee?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Hey, need a motion's adjourned.
What's your move?
I'll make them.
If you want to see. Okay, Dee Dee got it. All the favor, Dee Dee?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Adams, yes. Good night, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, Michael, Mike, Council Marquette, before you go. Thanks, everybody. I'm going to take off the recording. Sorry.